I'm sorry.
Ready?
Whatever you are.
Alright. We want to welcome you to our city commission regular meeting. We ask that you turn off for silent cell phones. Meetings are televised every day on channel two at 7:00 PM and at midnight. At this time, we'll have the pledge allegiance followed by silent meditation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
First item on the agenda, proclamations.
We've got some signers in the house.
Bill Pronda? How you doing, sir?
Good.
Well, alright. We're asking society for the preservation and encouragement of barbershop quartet singing in America, S.P.E.B.S.Q.S.A., now known as the Barbershop Harmony Society. Was founded in April 1938 and is celebrating its 81st anniversary. The Barbershop Harmony Society promotes singing and harmonious relations in the United States and in many countries throughout the world. The Cody Corleers work with the community to promote music education in the Leavenworth Schools and entertain residents of and visitors to this diverse city of Kansas. Now therefore, I Jermaine Wilson, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby proclaim April 2019 to be Barbershop Harmony Month.
Down our way, both night and day. You know everybody and they all know you. And even policemen say, "How do you do?" Out by the score and gals come more. And that whole gang of mine, they say, "Sweet Lord, down our way, down our way."
Could I add one thing? This is our 50th anniversary here in Leavenworth. We started in 1969 and I've been, I'm the last active charter member, so I'm...
Congratulations.
Great.
Congratulations.
That's wonderful.
Ms. Kelly?
How you doing?
Doing good. Our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of our communities and the majority of child abuse. And neglect occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations that are preventable, but without community resources and support. They don't know how to cope. And together, we can strengthen and support families in raising their children in a safe, nurturing environment. Now therefore, I Jermaine Wilson, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby proclaim April 2019 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Thank you.
I don't have anything prepared and I'm not going to sing, but thank you. Thank you very much, Jermaine and city for doing this. We, we at CASA know that everyone in this city and that the City of Leavenworth supports art agencies and supports making sure that no child is abused and that every child has the access to safety and to a permanent home. So, we appreciate everything you do and especially proclaiming this as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pat Dooley? The Congress of the United States passed the Civil Rights Acts of 1968, of which Title VIII declared that the law of the land would now guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunity. The fair housing groups in the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development have over the years received thousands of complaints of alleged illegal housing discrimination and found too many that have proved upon investigations to be violations of the fair housing laws. Equal housing opportunity is a condition of life in the City of Leavenworth that can and should be achieved. Now therefore, I Jermaine Wilson, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby proclaim April 2019 to be Fair Housing Month and celebrating 51 years of fair housing. Thank you.
Just real quick, if anybody does have complaints, they're more than welcome to call our office. I think with technology today, the easiest way is to go online, but if you don't understand that or don't know how, you're always welcome to call the housing authority and we can help you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chief? Chief, Bert, Chief, Chief. Emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. When an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property and the safety of our police officers and firefighters. It's dependent upon the quality and the currency of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Leavenworth Police Fire Communication Centers. Each dispatcher, each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, I Jermaine Wilson, Mayor of the City of Leavenworth, Kansas hereby proclaim April 14th through April 20th, 2019 is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Thank you. Both Chiefs?
Both Chiefs. Seniority, I'm going first. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, on behalf of the 10 dispatchers that we have working 24 hours a day, they answer somewhere around 75,000 phone calls every year from the public. They dispatch police and fire somewhere in the neighborhood of 25,000 to 35,000 times a year, and they are an integral part of what we do, and we very much appreciate your support annually. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, old business, consideration of previous meeting minutes. No question of comments?
Nope.
Alright. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the March 26th, 2019 meeting minutes.
One second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0. Next item on the agenda, new business, citizen participation. This is open to anybody in the public who has anything they would like to address.
My name's Larry Pinkerton. My son is doing the recording of this. I'm a member of the American Red Cross. I'm a volunteer with the association. And I would just want the city and the county to know that we are active here in Leavenworth. We do not have a chapter. We fall under Kansas City and St. Joseph, Missouri. Because of downsizing and so forth, they've combined the two of them. And as you know, we used to have a chapter here in Leavenworth, but they closed it up because of downsizing. But right now, myself and two other members have been working feverishly to build up the volunteer force here in Leavenworth County. To be exact about it, what we do is if there's a single-family fire or a apartment complex fire, we get called and we go out and we service the clients, the victims of the fires. We're always Johnny on the spot when we get notified and we go and we take care of them the best we can. Our funds and everything is limited to what we can do for the people, but we are here. And we just want you and the county commissioners and the city of Leavenworth to know that we are in existence here in Leavenworth. And right now, I've got a workforce of about 20 volunteers that we have built from three to 20 in a matter of about six months. And we're still working on that. In fact, we're trying to set up booths at different fairs and different things going on in the county of Leavenworth. And we just ask for assistance from the commissioners and other people that can help spread the word about the Red Cross being here in Leavenworth. It's because of people like you who back us that allow us to do what we do. Again, I say I'm a volunteer. 94% of the American Red Cross are volunteer workers. They are deployed to places, for example, I've been to Hurricane Florence when it hit North Carolina. I was in Virginia and North Carolina for three weeks. We separate ourselves from our family and our loved ones and we go out and we take care of people. Even if a fire occurs in Leavenworth at midnight, I may get a call and I get out of bed and I get dressed and I gather my stuff and I go out and I greet the people out there. And I also get with firefighters and anybody and first responders on the scene and I talk with them. The Red Cross is not just taking your blood and not just massive damages and destruction and stuff like that. We're also here for blood drive, pillowcase project, smoke alarms. For you who do not know this, the Red Cross has what we call Sound the Alarm Program. And what it is, is homeowners who don't know about their smoke alarms in their homes or anything, we set up booths and we encourage them to come in and talk to us about the smoke detectors. And if they sign up for those smoke detectors, we will contact the fire department here in Leavenworth County and they will go to that individual's home and they will install these 10-year battery life, uh, period for these batteries on these smoke detectors, free of charge. They're donated through the American Red Cross to the fire department and they take and they install them. This is, like I say, for homeowners, not rental places. That's up to the management, people who own them and stuff like that. But we're doing what we can to make it known in Leavenworth that we do exist, even though we're not a chapter. In fact, we call ourselves the tribe. And so, I just wanted that to be known here at the commissioners.
That's really good to know, sir. I, I'm glad you came because I was myself really concerned about the chapter closing here and what effect that would have. So it's really good to hear that you have that many volunteers working.
You know, and we've set up, so far, we've set up three, maybe four booths that we've had here in Leavenworth. And the main topic, when I agree with people that come through where the booths are set up at, I ask them how much they know about the Red Cross and they say, "Well, they're not here." I say, "Oh yeah, we're here, we're active." But how much you know about it? And they say, "Well, you take blood and you teach people how to babysit and lifeguards." And I said, "Did you know that we go to fires?" "No." "We know you go to major disasters." "Well, I go to the single-family fires, apartment complex fires, we go to accidents. You've had a couple of vehicles that's crashed into buildings here in Leavenworth. I've been to a couple of those, you know." We go to all kinds of disasters and I've spent myself on four deployments, two of them out of Fort Worth, Texas, and two of them, one of them in Springfield for the flooding and one in Florence. We are active. And I say, one of my counterparts is Disaster Mental Health. She is a child caseworker here in Leavenworth. I love her. We work good together. But we are building a group. Like I say, we call ourselves the tribe. And, you know, we can get a number out if need be, or either Mary or myself, if anybody wants any more information on the Red Cross, we can get it to them.
That'd be good.
We appreciate that, sir.
Yeah.
We meet every first Thursday of the month at Chamber of Commerce.
Were members of the tribe manning the ramparts when the city was fighting the flood a couple of weeks ago? I thought I saw the Red Cross on...
I don't know what they were doing here because I was deployed to Mount City. I spent a week in Mount City taking care of people.
Supported with some food, maybe some other things, but they were, it just happened to coincide with when I was down there, so...
When I go to a fire here down, when I go to a fire myself, I have little dolls and coloring books and crayons for children. And I also carry comfort care kits that is issued from the American Red Cross for the people. Plus, I also set them up with finances for at least one night or maybe two nights in a motel or to get them food or something like this, depending on the situation, how bad it is. So, we are actively doing what we can here in Leavenworth County.
How many years have you been doing this for?
I've been doing this, I started in St. Joe in 2013. And at that time, we still had the chapter here in Leavenworth. Diane Foddeness was the ringleader here. But shortly after joining, I went down to Fort Worth, Texas, and I was there for three years. And believe it or not, as a volunteer, I fulfilled over 6,000 hours, working hours, physical working hours with the Red Cross down in Fort Worth. And I have over 200 hours of training for the Red Cross and everything that we do. And then we moved back here, my wife and I moved back here in 2017. And so, we're here now, setting up and doing what we can to help the people.
What time you meet on Thursdays?
We meet at 10 o'clock at Chamber of Commerce, 5:18 Shawnee, every morning, or first Thursday of every month, we meet there. And this last meeting, we had 16 people show up and I was just excited.
That's great. That's great.
And all total, we've got like about 22 people that are members of the tribe, you know, so...
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, mayor's appointment. I move to recommend the following appointment, Community Development Advisory Board appointing Ralph Taylor to an unexpired term ending August 31st, 2019.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner, I mean Commissioner Baller.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0.
Quick question, Mr. Mayor. Anyway, are we going to appoint this guy for longer than three months, three and a half months?
Is he finishing out a term for somebody else?
He's finishing the term out.
He's finishing a term, then we can just bring it back in.
Oh, okay.
There's probably some others that will be appointed in that.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda, authorize city manager to sign flood-related documents.
Mayor and Commissioner, the item before you is just to give the city manager authority to sign all flood-related documents. Staff met with representatives of FEMA and the National Flood Insurance Program, the adjuster for that program, to visit the Bridge Tenders Building out at Landing Park, right behind the community center that was flooded a few weeks ago. And they informed us at that time that we just need one person within the city that's authorized to sign all the flood documents. So, we would just ask the commission to make that motion to make them the city manager that says he can sign all those documents on behalf of the city.
Question of comments?
Nope.
No, no, entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the city manager, Mr. Paula Kramer, to sign all flood-related documents for the City of Leavenworth.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0. Next item on the agenda, bids, contracts, and agreements. Consider rejecting bids for refugee bags.
I'll let our Public Works Director, Mike McDonald, handle this item and I think, if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is a follow-up on bids that the city issued for over 1 million trash bags to be distributed to residents of the city. These specifications are the same ones that we've been using for over 30 years, although we have made a few minor changes over the last few years. The key things, the size and the color, the thickness have remained the same. We have specified for several years, they have to be on a spool, they have to open on the anti-tear-off, not on the side. We went through that a few years ago. And there's a variety of other technical specifications. When we receive the bids, they're required to submit samples so we can verify that they meet the specifications. We opened bids this year. We received four bids and at the end of the day, we recommend rejecting all of the bids and rebidding for the trash bags. One company did not submit the required sample bags by the timeframe required. Another company said they didn't have the penny on a spool that they could send us, but they sent us some that were not on the spool and said they put them on spools, they were a little bit. And the last two companies were part of our quality control testing. They were measured, the bag thickness and other qualities were tested, but primarily the bag thickness did not meet our specifications by a substantial number in both cases. So we recommend rejecting all of the bids. All of the bids have been, bidders have been notified as the city's intent to reject all of the bids. I think that two of the vendors have submitted a bid protest, which I think really is formally informing state court that they're not happy that their bids are being rejected, that they don't see how that directly impacts the decision-making. And we recommend that we not make changes to our bid specifications or our process and re-advertise them in the next 30 days.
I agree.
Questions or comments?
Mike and Jake Corlone, we've been the last couple of years.
Right. If you look on page 14 of the policy report, you see the little bidders for the last several years, and it's been Jack Four and Dyna Pack, except for one year, we had Wase Zero was the little bidder. In the last four or five years, it's been Jack Four.
Yeah. I was thinking that.
But, okay, they did not submit by the timeframe, but they, did they submit late or did they submit at all? Not at all?
I believe they ultimately, I think they suggested that we use the bags that they submitted that last year as their test bags for this year and we said that's just not acceptable. They may have sent something since then, but we, it wasn't here by the bid date, so it was not a valid one.
Okay.
It is largely a technicality, but when we do bids, everything that is specified has to be followed. And so that's why we decided to go the way we did.
Okay. So if you open these up again, some of the same people could bid on them again or if they wanted to.
More if they threw up to the challenge, I fully expect that most of them will be.
Okay, good.
Well, does this delay us at all, this to the point of possibly running out of bags or not?
No, sir.
Okay.
And do we have to, have we already disapproved their appeals or have, you said two of them repealed or do we have to formally?
We reviewed the fact that they appealed and found that they disagreed with the fact that our quality control testing said their bags were too thin. They said, "No, they're not." And we said, "Well, we say they are and we're moving ahead."
We use both measurement by staff and also we use a third-party firm to test thickness.
Okay.
People had a one mil bag, were arguing that it was 1.6.
Yes, sir.
And you just put a mic on it, say, "Here, look at this."
No, that's what we did. And not just the city staff.
I've got a caliper home that'll measure that if you want.
It was not just city staff, we did use people that are in the business measuring the thickness of bags in the community. It's what they do. As an independent, they don't bid on our, they don't bid on our bags. It's not the kind of bags that they make, but they, we pay them to measure the bags and test them and report back. And they said they're too thin. We double-checked it with multiple people with multiple measuring instruments and confirmed that they appear to be too, too thin.
The bags that were used, the gray bags used for the cleanup, were those one mil bags, do you know, Mr. Marks?
They were our standard bags.
No, those were the ones that Melissa was handing out.
Those two summer bags, I believe, are the same. They're just different colors and you can identify them.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I don't mind, I'm act, it was one mil. Not my trash bag, ones you used it. What was it again?
It was not the same.
I don't believe what you were given at the spring cleanup, those are not the same bags that we use. I know they were thinner bags.
Yeah, yeah, they were. Cause I put them on a mic and, cause I've read this, I'd check my old bag with a new bag and I have a caliper and it gets that exact.
Who knew we'd spend this much time on bags?
It's been fairly seamless for 30 years, other than the flat packs, that was, that was...
Oh, that was a disaster. I remember throwing those stupid things like with the lion's clovers. I think that was, I think I broke something with one of those.
And then the ones that, when you actually got them apart, they didn't open where you tore off, they opened on the sides, which was driving people crazy.
Yeah, I saw that.
We specify that now.
Yeah.
I had to get my bags too, I had to get my bags.
You didn't? Called Lions Club. Their fault.
I paid my water bill too, so I'm good. My bad, we, no other question to comment, I'll entertain a public.
I move that we, that, I move that the city commission reject all bids and direct the staff to rebid for the refuse bags, start over again.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0. Next item on the agenda, first consideration amendments, first consideration ordinance amending Chapter 14, Amusements and Entertainments.
City Clerk Carla Williamson will start with this item.
This is, consider amending Chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances, just in kind of a regular review of different ordinances, and this is one that I kind of had flagged to bring up to the city commission at some point. But we did have a business do an inquiry with staff about opening a fun, kind of a family fun center type thing with different amusements. And one of the parts of this chapter deals with automated music and amusement devices, which requires anybody that has any of those type of devices, it's a $40 per year license to keep those in their business. So, that's one of the items before the city commission is to consider getting rid of that requirement to license those. I went back and looked and that's been on the books for, since the, before the 70s. So, it might be a fee that kind of has, kind of passed its time. We did just finish the annual licensing period for that permit and it's March 1st to February 28th of each year. So, if the commission does decide to eliminate this license, then we would recommend that we refund those for the year, just because, you know, they just paid it for the year and then if we get rid of it, I think that's probably the best thing to do. Another part of this ordinance, would recommend deleting it. It requires that you obtain a license to have a dance in the city. It's been on the books, we obviously have never had anybody in recent times get a permit to have a dance. There's not even a fee for it in the fee schedule, so we might as well eliminate it while we're at it.
Yeah.
Pool and billiards, recommend deleting the section of the code also. This has been in the code, I went back and looked at codes and I found it back from the 1920s that required this. It's probably unnecessary. Gambling is already prohibited and enforceable through federal and state regulations. In addition, it also says that you can't, anyone with a pool table has to allow the police department access at any time. Most places that have pool tables also have a, an alcohol permit. Maybe there's some that don't, but most of them, and so the police department already has right of entry into those businesses. So, we talked about it and this probably just isn't even necessary to have in the code. And then there's another section under Carnival Circus and Street Shows. This is probably the only thing that's going to remain in that section of the code and just refine the language in there, put some definitions in there, put in some language about requiring insurance and the permit process. And then the last thing in there is amusement rides. That was in the section before and we would recommend just changing that language since the state has regulated those through some statutes over the last couple of years, just reference the state statutes that anybody who has an amusement device or rides, that they just have to follow those state statutes.
Makes sense.
So, that would be the recommendation that staff would have for this amendment.
Alright. Any questions or comments?
Ms. Williamson, approximately how many, if you just off the top of your head, how many people paid for probably a jukebox or amusement device in the state and were you funding?
You know, I don't have the count of the number, but I guess we could figure it back out. It's just a little over $3,000 worth of licensing that we do for the year, so at 40 per...
75, 75 people, so not that many.
Or devices.
I don't know if there's that many jukeboxes left in the world.
So, I mean, it's like, I think Play, Bounce, and Jump has some of the, some of the amusement devices. Some of the bars in town have jukeboxes that have pool tables that would require it if it's coin hop, you know, things like that, so... Like when you go to Walmart and you've got the little claw game, anything... that's kind of a game chance.
Walmart.
Um, that one, um, yeah.
Okay, I get that.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think there was a question from someone.
Was you saying something, sir? Ah, I was just. Come to the microphone. Just, just pick it up. Yeah.
Yeah, I was just, no, just in question what she was reading there, um, and I know this is going to sound like a dumb question, but the Wordology said, anyone owning a pool table had to allow police officers to enter. Does that mean private establishment like my home, if I have a pool table in my basement, do I, is that what it's saying? Uh, from the Wordology that she gave, that's what it said. Anybody having a pool table must allow police officers to enter. I know she's probably talking about beer halls and stuff like that.
Yeah, that's.
But the Wordology said anybody.
Yes, referring to pool, billiard and pool halls.
Right.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Okay.
Billiard and pool halls.
I was just questioning, I didn't say anybody.
Yours, okay.
They're good.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
No gambling.
Oh, come on. I don't do that anymore.
Do we have a consensus to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, consent agenda.
All right. After review of the claims for this session, uh, the claims from March 23, 2019 through April 5, 2019, um, I move that, I move that the claims in the amount of 1,93,778.55 net amount for payroll effective March 29, 2019, in the amount of 350,434.55, no fire and pension.
Second.
Motion has been seconded, begin voting with Commissioner Priceinger.
Aye.
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 Motion carried, 5-0. Any other questions or wants, comments among the commissioners, Commissioner Baller?
No, just wondered if you had a good time in Washington?
It was a, a great experience.
Sure. Our city manager is going to talk about it too.
Yeah, yeah, it was a lot of information that I learned and, uh, a great experience for a time on a plane trip as well too, so, uh, I met, met a lot of, uh, great representatives, you know, so it was, it was nice.
I have nothing.
No.
Priceinger? City manager?
Yeah, uh, just wanted to mention one item that wasn't before the commission tonight